We have folks online, folks in the room, and a lineup this morning that's sort of a twofer. We've got Blanche and Rosemary, who are going to be giving the quarterly board report. And then we're following that, and Jim. So then we will be following on with some summary of the Climate Justice Revival, kind of what we've done and where we hope to head. A lot of inspiration and thought behind putting those themes and visions together. Without further ado, I'm just gonna call Blanche on up to introduce the board report. And yeah, you've got your visuals there.
I got a visual.
A visual. Okay. I'm gonna sit back here and get Rosemary loaded up when you guys switch.
Okay, sounds great. Morning. I'm Blanche Ebert. I'm a member of the trustees. And I'm kind of pinching for Sarah Monahan this morning, who called me, and she's in route from Minneapolis. So that's how long I've had to prepare remarks. I just wanted to let folks know that our condensed pledge tribe raised over $180,000 to date. Pledges are still coming in. Yes, I think Kathy Stinnett told us at the board meeting that that is pretty typical and on target for where we usually are. So that's great news. Pardon me. Okay, great. Okay, thank you. I want to remind folks that the annual meeting is June 8th. As far as I know, there are no bylaws, changes coming. Hi, Russ. There are three candidates for the board, Sarah Gritz, Claudia Faye, and Jane Gilli, and myself as president of the board. I also wanna mention that the Food Service Coordinator, kitchen manager position, has been approved by the board at the last meeting. It has not yet been posted. The Personnel Committee has a job description and an estimate of hours per week. So I imagine that this will be finalized and coming through shortly. And that's about all I have. I just want to remind people of the Program Council reimagining that Russ has been spearheading. If you haven't seen this, this is a graphic that's on the table over there. Reimagining our Program Council into seven specific areas of functionality. And also wanted to remind folks of our board goals for the year, which were under several headings. One was restructuring, and that was the Program Council Task Force that is still ongoing, and also revitalizing and reinvigorating RE. And then in terms of reconnecting and programming for our community, the Food and Fellowship Initiative that's going on. And then also renewing, which is under ministry, spiritual depth in our community is a goal for the year. And also Reverend Amy had a focus on healing from trauma, which there was a service directly related to that on March 30. Any questions for me? Hi, Kathy.
Oh, sorry about that.
You mentioned the kitchen person position. I've observed that a fellow who is a member here by the name of Peter has been doing a bunch of stuff around here. When did the board put that through?
The board approved the position just this last week at our board meeting in April.
Oh.
And so we've been collaborating with the Personnel Committee. Thank you Personnel Committee for developing that position description and the hours per week. So anyone who's doing work in the kitchen right now is doing it out of the good of their heart. There isn't a position, a person hired for that position yet.
Right, I understand that. But I've seen Peter doing a bunch of stuff the last few months. So.
Peter, they're doing the repair stuff.
Oh, Peter. Oh, on the building, not on the kitchen. Sorry, I misunderstood. Yeah, yeah. Peter's been working with Facilities Council, which is Barb Monte and David Broadwell, on work on the, on our building, on our facilities, on our, on our infrastructure. And I apologize, I don't know the details of that. There is no formal position for a building facilities manager at this time. But Peter has been doing work. And the person who would, who would know most about that would probably be David Broadwell.
Okay.
Sorry.
As far as, as far as we're concerned, there is no position.
Peter, would you like to clarify?
We have a funded position in the operating budget for building maintenance. The person who's done that for years is still doing it. His name's Billy. And he reduced his hours, which made it possible some existing funding for having Peter come in and do some of the very necessary work for caring for the building. So that's, I don't know the mechanics for the Personnel Committee and Board, but I understand the financial capacity to do that in the middle of the year. Is that helpful?
Yes, it is very much. Thank you.
Because I, I see Peter, but I don't see Billy. So I thought maybe he would retire.
No.
He does come. And I, it's most notable with the paper that people leave behind in the sanctuary and elsewhere on Sundays is all gone when I get here, a little later on Monday. So anyway.
Thank you, Peter. Anything else? Thank you. I'll turn it over to Rosemary, who's gonna talk about the budget.
Okay, I'm gonna do a little technology switch. Move this. Not in the way.
Okay. Getting a little adjusted here. Thank you, Blanche, for all your board report. I'm Rosemary. I'm the treasurer, in case some of you are newer or haven't seen me in a while. So this is the third quarter treasure report, just a little bit about our accomplishments and what we do behind the scenes. So the first thing that I talk about, Food Service Coordinator position. Blanche covered a little bit about that. But we have actually planned in our upcoming budget and entered into the budget for that person's salary. So we're all set to go. And it's just a matter of now that we have the position description and can post it, we'll be moving further forward. We did quite a bit of building maintenance in the last quarter. That was a total of $16,703. The HVAC unit four, and that's in the basement room, had maintenance and new control board. That was $1,113. Water heater in the west end of the building was installed March 17th for $4,490. Sofit coverings in the front were finished March 18th for $5,100. Skylight facings refinished in March 25th at $6,000. The money for these expenses, in case you're worried about, wow, that's a lot of money, is it comes from a building reserve that we, the Finance Council has developed for years and put in as a savings, and also our operating account, which we watched carefully and built into our expenses. Pledges through March and revenue are on target for the 24-25 budget, meaning we're 75% of the way through the year. Our pledges and everything else, pre-pledges and giving is at that similar rate. Current process, and current in process, and future planning, which I will move my slide so you can read a little bit more. So building maintenance, we have some flooring that is gonna be worked on in the east hallway. The materials were ordered March 28th, and we paid $4,718 to Green Building Supply. And that's gonna be installed by David Broadwell. And then... And like I said, Blanche earlier, covered the Foods Coordinator description. So I have to update that because we are now beyond the description. We actually have our duties and things laid out. Our cash flow marked at higher costs due to the maintenance repairs and reimbursement of staff for General Assembly registrations and comprehensive building insurance quarterly premium, which was $3,258. And then some expenses were more than budget in some areas. Some are less in others. But the total of all our budgetary accounting is well under budget for the years. We had lower revenue for the third quarter, but this is not unusual due to the flow of more pledges are usually paid earlier in the year of the fiscal year versus later. And then the other thing I'm gonna show you, we are working on our budget for the July 25 through June 26 year. And I have a summary, and I put some copies out there. Hopefully that's been passed around, it looks like. And I'm gonna only do an overview.
By request.
Okay. So at the top part of the report is the income, where we, various incomes that we have. And then the bottom, the last half is the expenses and their comparison. Like I said, just a brief tour of how we have minister positions in the beginning, support administrative, and then by departments. And I, and I'm not gonna go too much into it because on my, I'm gonna switch back to the slide. We are going to have budget hearings and annual meeting dates. May 25th, 9:30 is gonna be a forum for a budget hearing forum. So that's gonna be the main thing where those of you who are looking ahead of time, you can prepare your questions so that we have some time before the next budget hearing, which is gonna be June 1st, that we can answer them, get more questions, and have most everything answered before our June 8th annual meeting. So again, March 25th, 9:30, it'll be the budget forum. June 1st, 2025, so that those who can't make it early in the morning will be 11:30 after church budget hearing. And then June 8th will be our annual church, annual meeting. Any questions? Okay.
Normally, these kinds of jobs incidents that you mentioned are unknown to us unless we happen to be in the building during the weekend and see folks working on it. David's working on the weekend. But when the skylights were worked on, everybody knew about that. The bad smell, the mess that had left over the whole building, the plants being potentially damaged. We all noticed that. So I'm wondering if, if the board, how the board is gonna take that information and learn from it so that that kind of thing doesn't happen again.
Okay, that would be probably a question more for the board. Even though I'm a treasurer, I'm not an official board member. We changed our bylaws so that we could have a treasurer go forward, not having to worry about term limits and things like that. So we could continue. As long as I'm doing a job and you guys are happy with me, we keep going forward. We have that historical and skill level going forward consistently. So until I'm not here anymore, if you guys are happy and I still love doing it, which I do so far. So that might be a more board question, I'm sorry to say.
So that really isn't a budget question, Kathy. You're talking more about what happened there in the, in the indoor garden. Right, so that was necessary work that had to be. And so it wasn't, it was a concern for everyone. And the board is working on, right? Russ, you wanna speak to this a little? The board is working on a policy to address this issue. There are several issues. There was the fumes, there were the ants. There's also the safety issue in the building. So I appreciate bringing that forward. We're working on that. We learn from our experiences together.
And, and I'll say one thing I'm learning too is, there was one question brought up. How do we prioritize some of these expenses? Because like sometimes a person like me who's newer to this position would think, oh, okay, it's within our budget, we go forward. But I think another thing that has been put out there is how do we prioritize projects? So that's another thing that even I'm gonna learn from and the board together to try to say, okay, we need to have a list of all the projects you wanna do for a year. And then we, we work together, both board and Finance Council, to plan those out, both budgetarily safely and safely for the congregation as well.
Rosemary, is there a book?
Is there a book in the office where you put things that need to be done? Something like that for building maintenance? I, I'll look for that. I think there might be. There has been.
David Broadwell and Barb Monte have been our facilities. So, and they are the people who know the most about the details of that.
And, and I do think because some of us congregants are aging out. Like I told my extremely handy husband, there's four lights built out above the chancel. And those, and he and I aren't willing to get up on the highest ladder that we own to change those. Not in the book, or I'll find it.
To be clear, that's administrator territory. The congregation administrator is outstanding. And I can't imagine how we would be without the skills that are here almost every day. That book, if it's not there, it should be. I haven't looked, I haven't needed to look in. But I've certainly noticed those light bulbs that are out. So thank you for putting that out in the conversation. The responsibility of all of us congregants or citizens in the building to report things that need some...
So I checked online, no questions, just a thank you from...
And I think there is one more.
Great report. Oh, yeah, I'm not cutting it off. I just wanted to give that full update. But here we go, passing the mic, continuing.
Good. Very. Has there been any discussion amongst the board with yourself about tracking volunteer hours, particularly, or more specifically, volunteer hours that trend towards the professional skill set as a way to look at if we didn't have that volunteering going on, how much would it be costing the church to actually have the work done?
I, I don't know at this time that we have an official thing, but it should be. And yeah, so that I make a note of. And I, I feel the strongest person that has a pulse on knowing who, who's who and does what can be our administration, you know, Kathy. But, and I'm still getting to know a lot of people regarding that. But the board probably knows a lot of people as well.
Yeah, and I guess I didn't mean to suggest that it, that it's a should, but rather had, had it come up in conversation as, as maybe a should, or is it too much work for the benefit?
Yeah, and considering... Considering that we are also putting as far as pledges, volunteer hours, or people to be able to participate when they don't have a, you know, personal budget, we'd wanna probably keep track of that. So I, I believe it's an excellent suggestion. And that way we know, and we also know what's the cost of our volunteers. And that might be knowledge people want to know in the future. And wow, we're saving, either saving a lot of money because of all the people who feel that's important, and they are able to do that.
Rosemary, I think the hiring of a kitchen person is an example of that because we've had people volunteering to do that kitchen work. And when some of the people were saying, well, we're near retirement on this, that led to the position. So I think there is a recognition of the number of people who volunteer for your needs.
And I just wanna say Julie Morgan is doing a bang-up job with that with the care committee. She gives everyone free rides, meals, cars.
So are there any more questions? If not, then we did have our, our endowment committee that had some things to present to everyone as well.
There's one more question from online. This is from Blake. Might it make sense for, say, outdoor sanctuary to estimate the number of hours devoted to groundskeeping during our May through September service timeframe annually?
I think so, yeah. Because that's a lot of work throughout the spring, summer, fall, you know, and that's good knowledge to have. And yeah, I think anything.
Before we leave that topic, bear with me. Many of us, excluding myself, think that having coffee is important. I almost never drink coffee in this building, but it's not because I don't think we should have coffee. Our wizard, Peter, that we've already talked about today, has completely dismantled our bun coffee system, ordered sorted replacement parts and so forth. And if you know anything about coffee, it has scale, it has oil, it has a whole lot of stuff. And we've been using that system for well over a decade. And I think that, that surely is unpaid work based on what I heard earlier about what Peter's doing. But I had a lengthy conversation with him this week when I just happened to know some other kitchen business. And we're gonna have a coffee machine back in prime condition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Your crack endowment committee net. If you remember, we have three funds. We have the Endowment Fund. We have the Youth Fund, sometimes known as the Kolkendorfer Fund because it was Vi Kolkendorfer who donated those monies. And we also have the Seeds for the Future. The Endowment Fund has a balance of $150,000. The... The Youth Fund has a balance of $25,180. These monies are invested in the UU Common Endowment Fund. If you remember last annual meeting, the bylaws were amended so that we could begin to use earnings from our endowment monies. And, and so after the, the monies were transferred into that Common Endowment Fund, we have received $2,659 in earnings, and they haven't been used. Okay? And we have an application form. And if any of you have any ideas about how we can get the, the word out more. But we have an application form that outlines the approved, if you will, uses of each of these, of these funds. So this, this past week, remember that the Seeds for Future monies were donated during COVID, early on, as I understand it, COVID. They were never used. There was never any, any application for those monies to be used. Kathy says there was.
There were. We did an initial big step, but everyone...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. But in any case, there's $12,731 in that. And that is invested in a, in a US Treasury Money Market Fund. Kathy, go ahead.
We did give a basket with food and gift card for $200 at a local grocery store to every single family when we gathered enough money to do so. So that, that was about $6,000.
That was young children, right? Families with children.
Yes, yes. Yeah. These were for young families with children who were part of UUCD. And then we gave a few gifts. I remember a chair for a, a new, a new child in the family who needed extra care or something. And then we paid for some tires. We gave out a good bit of money, but we had a lot, $12,000.
Okay, thank you. That's good clarification. And so what we, what we decided at our, at our meeting to, using the Seeds money, there's a compassion camp this summer for, for children and youth that it all worth is working on. And we said, we need to get it a lot. So we said we would donate up to $750 for food for those. And as I understand it, that camp will be here. It'll be UU's? No, it's not here. You gotta use the microphone. I can't hear you. And, and I guess it doesn't make any difference. I don't know if it's being hosted here, but...
It's being held at Peace Church.
Oh.
We are hosting this year. As far, as, as far as paying for the supplies and the food.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's still called hosting.
Okay, all right.
According to them.
Thank you for the clarification. So also Kathy, I'd like you to speak to this. There's a Unistar camp that is a UU camp. And, and we're going to donate $1,500 from the Seeds money for families. Any family who wishes to use monies for that, for the cost of, of that camp. If you have two families that wish to use it, we'll just split it. Or three families, we split three ways. So it's $2,500. So it's twenty five hundred dollars. Kathy can explain, uh, to you what that, what that camp is.
It is called Camp Unistar. We actually have a representative from Camp Unistar here today, but that person hasn't arrived yet, I guess. But anyway, we have, uh, signed to, as Jim just said.
Kathy, do you wanna come up in front of the little? The camera's right here, there it goes.
It's, as I said, it's called Camp Unistar, and it has been in existence for about sixty years. And it is down or up by Cass Lake, in, in Cass Lake. Thank you. That's right, I was just gonna say Star Island, I really like that name. Sorry, I don't have my other glasses. Uh, they advertise, uh, that it is surrounded by the clear waters of Cass Lake. Amidst the pine forests of northern Minnesota, UU's and like-minded friends gather to relax and regenerate. It was established, uh, oh, yeah, it was established in nineteen sixty-one. And it is a nonprofit volunteer managed camp for people of all ages. And during the season, camp offers eleven weeks, some of which are already full, I understand. Uh, there are many youth and adults who come together as families, and they do, uh, everything from sailing, swimming, kayaking, canoeing, hiking, volleyball, horseshoes, crafts, card games, board games, and checking out the sunrise, sunsets. There's also something that I think is really cool that's happening this year. Uh, they have, over the years, uh, supported the Leech Lake Tribal College and the Cass Lake Boys and Girls Club. But this year, they're going to include the outdoor learning space program provided by the Cass Lake Early Childhood Development. So in addition to contributions that the Unistar makes to the local community, which includes buying supplies from Cass Lake, et cetera, they also, the Unistar folk, uh, make sure that any leftover food or any kitchen supplies, anything that cannot be stored, is donated to whomever is interested in taking it on. The, the cost, this is coming from somebody who's never camped, seems a little pricey to me, but, uh, for a family of, of uh, four, it's, it would be just under two thousand dollars. And so we've, we've devoted twenty five hundred so that we could possibly pay for about half for two families. If, if families are wishing to attend, and if it's more than that, then we'll work out something else.
For what period of time?
It's their weekly, there are eleven weeks of programming. And there are three ways to be there, and I've given you the most expensive, I believe. So there's a, a cabin, there may be seven or eight cabins, and there is a bedroom for each family in one cabin. So there, I believe, may be three bedroom cabins. So three families would share a kitchen and bathroom and all, but they would have their own bedroom. And then there's a lodge with seven or eight rooms. And then people can tent right by the lake as well. And then, of course, the tending would be the least expensive. Any question? Yes? That's my understanding.
That's our church.
The, the statewide whatever.
Back here in Camp Unistar, maybe here today. Just a, a quick, um, uh, infomercial about transitioning to our next topic, which is, uh, deep on the climate justice revival. So um, let Jim wrap up.
Yeah, I'll wrap up really quickly. Um, Russ has asked, uh, the Endowment Committee to be approved. Use five hundred dollars for the electronic bulletin board. That will come from our earnings from the Endowment Fund. So if you have any ideas of how to get the name or the, um, make it more known that we have these monies, if people aren't applying, then we will stop the distribution of the earnings. Let them just go back into the fund. And so it's important that people, and if you have any ideas of how we should do it, let us know, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm just gonna invite Beth up to kick us off with, um, some themes from the Climate Justice Revival. And I'm gonna bring up the slide.
Yeah, this is the Silver Earth Week. It seemed like a good time to review some of the work we did three long months ago in, uh, looking for reviving ourselves, our community in climate. We did, um, work that you will see on this board. Um, these are images to cut out from, if you, if you were there in the morning, we did what, uh, in what we would want our community to look like in 2050. There are pictures on this side and pictures on this side as well. Um, so that was there, yes. Okay, you wanna turn it around? It's, um, yeah, I kinda cut them out of the big boards. And then in the spirit of earth, we went and took those altar boards cut them in half, and we made signs the last two Sundays for the, uh, Earth Day March. And we made like here about fourteen signs by people as young as four and as old as, I'm not gonna say. So, but, um, I think it's a little hard sometimes to remember because it's such a, uh, challenging and unusual hundred days in regard to any form of justice. So we wanna take a look back at this, and Meredith's gonna talk about one idea about moving forward. Go, you may remember this beautiful light display that Anne, um, Bible Girl created for us. And how do I, let's see, just forward, right?
Down arrow.
Down arrow, that's a, it may be, um, I think she's probably confused, yeah. Okay, so do you remember being right in this space? A lot of you in there, were people working and thinking about all these ideas. We had lots and lots of ideas. I'm not gonna go through this slide much, but, but, you know, twenty years of the things that we have done as a Green Sanctuary or, um, accredited Green Sanctuary movement. And, um, what we are, the point we were at here and now is like, where do we go particularly as a congregation? Um, there are a lot of things we can do individually, but how do we move forward? So that's where we're looking. Um, some of the ideas that came out here, um, ongoing, oh, no, these are still things that we're doing. Here we go, good themes that came out. There were so much going on, what I tried to do was look at themes that came out. So remember, so what we were asked to do was to, um, imagine, reimagine a community the way we wanted to. And you can see it, and there's a lot of natural, if you can understand. Lots of natural, you know, water, trees, um, that kind of thing. But there are also a lot of things about community and how we work together as a community. Because the emphasis was on justices, is building the kind of community we need to get the future that we want. I'm gonna go make here. Uh, so some of the things that suggested, they were, um, what I call double benefit solutions. And these were ones that work for the health of the earth and the health of communities. And you can see there's food, all kinds of things about water. Try to find some non-car transportation, which is challenging in this town. More affordable and efficient, energy efficient housing. And then lots of things on natural solutions. Can we work on healthy lawns, planting trees, preserving peatlands and forests, protecting animals? Establishing rights of nature, which is a movement we've had in. And we talked about collaborations, this is a lot of community. And we'll get, we're gonna get two minutes here. Um, working together with different parts of our community. And then acting on policy, economic alternatives, building community in lots of ways, including the arts, singing, including young people. Um, this slide is actually the bottom of that, that one, because we went from finding geologists to looking at community care. And I think that, I'm gonna take another look where we, okay. This is another way to look at a summary, which, uh, Meredith created. And I'm gonna pass this on to Meredith, okay. Well, okay, so this is the diagram we had. And instead of saying, we wanna say, what brings you joy? We mean all of us here, we're trying to find things that we can do together. Yeah, let's see where we are. Okay, I'm gonna pass this to Meredith, we're kinda doing the speed version of this.
Yeah. And it's fine, because there will be time to slow down and talk more also. Um, I'll just take the, uh, wearing my, my dual hat. I'll just take the opportunity to say, we might be running one or two minutes over. So your help is, uh, as always, very much needed. And putting chairs away and the defiders. Um, I'm just gonna scooch up here a little bit, um, to this diagram, because all the themes that Beth mentioned are so, um, community focused, community centered. And no matter how you slice or dice the different themes that were emerging from all of this incredible work by so many of people in this room today and back on, uh, the twenty seventh of January, um, they all are very much not only about climate. And thinking about these different aspects of resilience, I've been so inspired to see some of the things that have been generated from this work already. I'm thinking about Wes Samuelson's group that he started bringing together, um, uh, as part of the welcoming and affirming committee, uh, talking about resilience and how we can support each other. Uh, I think they're meeting once a month now to, uh, discuss, um, different challenges that everybody is experiencing and, um, how we can support each other through those challenges. So it all kind of comes into this community care as a hub. And then with this, um, word cloud, I, I pulled together all of this information from the rich pictures that, um, Beth and Rosemary were so beautifully demonstrating and just trying to see like, what does it look like when you bring them all together? So the big words are the ones that were mentioned most, if you're not familiar with word clouds. The, the little words are also important. They, they are just as important in sort of knitting this thing together. And so this started looking to me very hub-like and sort of thinking about our values with love at the center, with love being the hub. And there are lots and lots of spokes around it. Um, so what do you do with something like this? When you've been through this exercise that Beth just mentioned? What brings you joy? What are you good at and what work needs doing? I think people struggled with this exercise a little bit because it was sort of like, well, what does need doing? And what can I contribute to the collective goal? Um, I love this picture, um, because it shows Carol and Debisee, who I decided was the mascot for the Climate Justice Revival, Scott's dog. So Debisee is, um, the Ojibwe word for enough. How do we make sure that we all have enough? And Carol just looks blissed out, holding this adorable little, uh, dog. Maybe Debisee will be here today. But, um, so what is the work? There are different things we can do on our own. Um, we can recycle, we can, um, compost. We can do things in congregation, like the amazing work that the Climate Justice Team has done already with solar panels. We have a green roof, we've got green space. We're surrounded by a natural area at Chester. Um, it's incredible. And so there's this new, um, movement that is emerging across the US and probably the globe, um, or addressing something called Climate Resilience Hubs. And it's new enough, and people are doing it differently enough. But you can even like go to the Department of Homeland Security's website and find a map of all the places that are identifying themselves as climate hubs around the US. And they have different things in common. There's not really a cookbook or a playbook for how you do this. But I just wanna put forward that our congregation, our building, has so many of these elements already. Community collaboration, meeting everyday needs, having renewable energy and storage. Maybe we don't have all of these things. But I want to just in, invite, uh, this group. I would like to put out a plea as well, um, to the broader community to just sit down and kind of imagine, uh, what, what we already have that makes us resilient, what we can lean into, uh, where any gaps might be so that we could maybe think about being a resilient network, um, maybe with other congregations. And, um, and what we can do to sort of have energy flowing between our, um, immediate congregation and the neighborhood around us. And I think there are already some amazing ideas about that. One that emerged was having, uh, some national night out and invitation for people to come and visit us that night. Don't know if we've tried that before, but a way to really connect with our immediate neighbors. So I don't know what this looks like yet, except it would be sort of a, a regular gathering for a period of months, uh, maybe connecting with the folks who are assessing our, um, our safety. There's a committee that's getting together to consider, I think it's.
Safe church.
Safe church, yeah. And so there could be some nice intersections there, um, but something to explore. So if you're game, I'm gonna put out the call, let me know today. And then we'll also, uh, just put out the call more broadly. Thank you.
So one thing we're seeing, you know, a lot of emphasis at this time to realize that how far we've gotten in changing our climate is that we need to build our communities in, in resilience. And so we have, yeah, we have a lot of gifts. We already have community in here, we're not our neighbors. We have a nursery school, we have the Victory Course. People who use this building and finding this building a kind of home. And is there a way we could start to think more carefully about how would we respond to crises, particularly floods, power outages, these kinds of things? And where can we play a role in supporting people? And then one thing I've learned, Minnesota Interfaith Power and Light has been doing a series, is that they're saying the, the best resilience hubs are those that people already trust and connect to. So if you're going to find someplace to help you when things get tough, you tend to go to those, those places where you already feel connected. And so we're talking about, and it's an element of safety, I think it's an element of care and committee. So it's an idea that we might wanna pursue, given the gift of this building that we received. And I always considered it much of a gift from Ellen Zappa. How do we best share that gift and how, you know, that we are working on?